Okay, it's close enough to nine o'clock. It is my day, July 24th, 2017, and I'm called Public County Commissioners Court Director. Today we have Herman Moore from Court of Chapelton in Baptist with your verification. He will come up soon. We have four standing on each side.
I'm happy to meet you all, thanking you for being the Godfather and Savior that you are. Kind of thanking you for the privileges that we enjoy in this great country, that we're able to sell them together in peace. And we pray that you would give us a spirit of integrity and unity as we sell them together and help us be one with one another, oh God, and whatever we decide to do here, we pray that our ideals and all those that we do on the agenda will be governed by the precepts and the statutes found in your only word. We ask you to bless this grace here in Amarillo, and we thank you for doing so. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, ladies and gentlemen, the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, I'm gonna skip down to number five, so that judges can get back to work and put some people in jail or let them out, whatever they want to do. So Judge Ward, you gonna speak to this? Let me read the judgiment.
I thought Judge Lexon was, but I guess I will.
Well, she does a little bit more. Let me read the judgiment real fast. This is funding for night shift magistrates to receive the presentation regarding shared funding for night shift magistrate positions in corporations in City of Amarillo, Randall County, to take such action as may be appropriate. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. You know, they tell us at New Judges School, we should never set foot in this room, so I'll take a little risk here. Take this going second time, 17 years I've been here, so try not to get away with the same thing. You have the proposal in front of you. I could maybe just give you a little historical perspective, since it's hard to believe that I'm kind of one of the old guys now. When I first started about 17 years ago, we would get, like, woke up at night maybe once every six months. In fact, it was such a rare occurrence that Patsy Kaiser used to make breakfast for the police officers that would come over to Sam's house to sign a warrant. Because of changes in the law, because of changes, you know, in the levels of crime, here in the border carry, that's changed over the years. And here recently, it's really changed because of some changes in the law, and also a change at the PD in prioritizing some things like misdemeanor blood draw-ups. So while we used to get woke up maybe once every six months, we're now getting awakened multiple times at night. And the bad thing about that is, the police officers that are waking us up are working at night shift, and they're going home. Sergeant Kelly, you'll understand this, they're going home eventually, going to sleep. On the other hand, we're getting up after being awake all night and going to our regular job during our regular hours and being asked to make some really important decisions that affect people's lives. And I won't speak for everybody else, but if I'm sleepy and tired and cranky, I'm not sure I'm gonna get a job of that as I should. So what we'd ask you to do is consider entering into an interlocal agreement with the city of Amarillo and with Randall County to fund a couple of new associate city judges to handle the night time warrants. The good news about it, doing it this way, is it won't require any legislation. If we were, as the state or the counties, to want to do this ourselves, we would have to sponsor legislation, get a statute enacted to allow us to do that. The city doesn't have those constraints, and so they can do it, and then we can join in with them in an interlocal agreement. You see the cost there? They're, you know, saying that they think it costs the county approximately just less than $15,000. I would just point out to you, I asked Ms. Hood to look, last year alone, the five district judges and two county court law judges returned over $250,000 of unused budget funds that you had graciously given to us. We turned those back to the county. So this is just a fraction of what we've given back out of our budgets, and it wouldn't seem to be, I know you guys don't want to spend any money, and I appreciate that, but it wouldn't be a whole lot of money.
Judge, we don't have to propose.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was handing something, and I just assumed you guys...
But it would be great to have one, as a way to reference.
I'll give you mine. But I'm happy to answer any questions you've got.
So, okay, go ahead. No, go ahead.
So, Judge, what would be the hours of operation?
The way we've been doing the rotation, it's been from 6:00 PM on Monday till the following 6:00 PM on Monday. The judge that's been on call has covered that. Now, I guess that would just kind of be up to the city to set the hours in conjunction with the county, but, you know, we hadn't really discussed that, I don't think, as to how late you go. You know, the problem is really getting woke up after you're asleep. I don't see any problem 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM or something, going ahead and just adding...
You would have some established hours of operation then?
We would. So that way, law enforcement would know. That's one of the problems that we had, was law enforcement just didn't know who to contact and what time to contact them. And as you guys are aware, we judges maybe don't play well with others. It was hard to get each judge to do exactly the same thing. So some judges were accepted on night time warrants, some were requiring the law enforcement officer to come to their house, and this would give a uniform system to where law enforcement knew exactly, you know, the rules that were playing on it, and it would make it much simpler to handle.
How many judges would be involved in this?
It would just be two. The proposal's just to hire two new associate municipal judges.
So they're actually big boys, you see?
Yes. Which is a benefit to the county, it's not bad that additional.
Is there a copy of this in our local, certainly like to see that, or?
We've really had a go to that point yet. If conceptually the condition is on board with this, then we could easily put that together.
We'd love to give you guys just a heads up, that we were asking for this, and before, you know, maybe it evolved.
Yes, and then I believe Randall Kelly, Commissioner's Court, will take it up. This is an issue to our...
That is correct.
I see Robert Love here, I guess we can...
That is correct. We're gonna make the same proposal to the Randall Kelly Commissioner's Board.
And Judge Lexon, you're here for playing the city, so did you have, do you have two people in the building do this? Two people that stay up at night anyway?
No, I'm not sure.
And why are we proposing funding here in front for this? Or is it being entertained for budget? Is that the proposal for the new budget funding and change? So less than $15,000 for us, per judge, or total?
Total.
So you indicated that it was approximately $250,000 returning to the county of unused funds, so what account did that go?
Falls in front now, it's going, it comes from all of the counties and most departments.
So you're not requesting action today, just for us to entertain that as we start bench sessions, just after?
Yes.
Okay. Judge, is there anybody having any questions? Does anybody else want to speak to this?
No, he's, he usually looks pretty cranky.
You better like him. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Judge. Okay, number one, approval of minutes to recognize the ministry of July 10, 2017, Public County Commissioners Court. Are there any changes or additions to that? Is it still accredited, is it still recognized? Number two, vouchers to consider, night time approval of payment vouchers. Process by the county law enforcement, July 5, 2017, to July 19, 2017. Check numbers 175709 through 175950, and wire transfers 95394, in the amount of $5,210,359.35. Yes. So any questions on that?
I know that we approved of the vouchers, as a member of our county judge, for checks totaling 175709 through 175950, and wire number 95394, in the amount of $5,210,359.35.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions, Judge, from the check number six of, or I'm sorry, page number six of 32, check number 175774, say $3,000 for care and health damage in the sheriff's office? Is that covered under our policy? Confirming we're getting reimbursed by the insurance for that?
Yeah, let's see, it's...
Accident auto.
Accident auto.
Oh, accident autos. That one, once again, those, we have a lot of different clients, I will have to verify the financial coverage of that one. Okay, if any, please, please, please.
Okay.
Page 11, page 17 of 32, check number 175890, Motorola Solutions, so a million dollar expense. I know I had a conceited agenda item in quite some time, there was a subcommittee that was established to review the contract, and that's when Kevin presented to the Commissioners' Court, I'm just, I'm interested in where we are with that implementation, who's leading that effort? Is that you, Sheriff?
Yeah, we're still in the process of doing that, but, you know, the contract is our minutes, huh? And so we're in the process of getting our radios established, really. So your question is where we are in the process, because it's already been two.
Two questions. One, where we are in the process, and the second question is, even though I know we approved the contract to move forward with implementation, there were specific questions on the line items, and what we were getting charged versus the city. Part of why we entertained this was an interlocal discussion, and we piggybacked off their purchasing process to be able to get the best value, to have two entities come together. I know there were line item questions on why we were getting a different price versus what the city was. At one point, Motorola said that they would share their contract with us, we're in interlocal. I never saw that, so I'm just interested to know where we are in that process, a million dollar expense today.
Sir, anyone speak to that?
I don't know that I can answer your questions on the contract stuff, but I can tell you that with the conversation is they have, we do have the same base price, if that makes sense. The reason why they're discounted, because of the volume of what they're ordering versus what we are ordering. As far as the process, we've already, we all went up to Chicago a couple of weeks ago, and have seen the system in its entirety, as well as being put together. So the idea is, they took us up there, and they got the whole system up and running inside the warehouse, and tried to go through and do all kinds of defaults, and they could not work, and showed where the, how it goes back, and showed where the faults were. That's all been done, we can act up, and we can see, and they're in the process of receiving some of that. The radios, some of the radios have been ordered, as far as fire department has ordered their radios. We've gotten all the numbers of what we need as far as radios. There was a tower that's, we're still got it built and placed out of the new facility. And again, that's not a cost, that's an overall thing. We're still looking at some of the towers that we'll be using, whether they're gonna be structurally sound to hold in tenders that we're gonna use, so that's still in the process. It's moving forward as far as everything else, as much as, I don't know, working interlocal to get the provision. But I think the pricing was the same, but they did discount the rest of the stuff that they're putting versus...
And I thought that we would, this certain purchase, if you can, on this tier, I thought part of the agreement was that we would make those purchases together, so that we could capitalize on that volume. I recognize we were the more than you ordered, but the price points of those are...
It's a different, it's a different contract. We're using a different source.
We're using the HGAC, the Houston-Dalveston, we are using, verifying that pricing, verifying that pricing, we are getting that critical. Yes, it's a HGAC pricing, we are getting that, I verify that with HGAC. So that part of that is not an interlocal, but we are doing interlocal, which that can voucher that, as far as what we're doing with the city and the local.
The interlocal that we did with the city was to make sure that we had access to the coordinates, which the city purchased, you know, across the hills of the million houses. That's our interlocal with the city. The pricing is through the Houston-Dalveston area council, and it's 50 cent, all that pricing, to verify this payment of the vouchers is the payment that was called for, that is called for in the contract with Motorola, which was actually due upon signing the contract, which was a couple of months ago, so really this bill, you're way farther in the process than, than the contract called for before this payment was enforced by Motorola.
And Sheriff, did Randall County end up going to Motorola? I know Judge Howde Shaw had this very specific question, same concerns, came to the guidance to hear our dialogue.
The last I heard is they're helping it about a year behind us.
Okay.
They're still in talks and works, and that, like I said, that's been several months ago, but they're still behind us, and there's still the talks around. Everybody's anticipating that they will go with them.
I thought we all had to be able to say, so some of us can communicate.
Exactly. And they will have to do something, but what, the problem with what Randall's doing is doing way more than what we're doing. They're getting a whole lot of RMS, jail, CAD, a whole kind of, everything beyond radios. And so that's, I think that's where some of their discrepancy is, is what they're working on. They're actually gonna have a second core versus what we have. They will actually be the backup system for the whole thing, so if tornado comes through the west side, ACC, everything will be able to transfer to Randall County and LA.
Very good, Judge. Okay. Ted, could I request as a follow-up, a copy of our official contract and the city contract that Motorola communicated that would send our way?
I have that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner, can you come back up? I just looked at the year on that accident auto body, that is the insurance. Okay? Thank you very much. Or anything else? Have a motion in a second, all in favor, Richard Ridenes, all in place. Insurance report, recognize the insurance on the board. Nothing, but a good new, okay. I number, so, so, Treasury report, laying in. Good morning, Mr. Green. Okay, let me go briefly, if you'll, just go to the investment report, I'll give you a good chance, and clearly are. If you'll go to page three, I just wanted to point out, down at the very bottom, it gives your April, May, and June interest rates, and so those on the left-hand column is the, all of the interest-bearing checking accounts that we have there, and then the right column is just our general fund, where we have that special rate, and this one is at 122, 122 basis points. And also, in our general fund at A and B, we have 16.4 million. I will be moving some more over there, because they are maintaining a higher rate, and so I'll try to keep this close to 20 as I can. Okay. Then if you go to page six, just wanted to point out to you our totals in comparison to where we were this time last year. Of course, this is just a snapshot picture, and we are doing quite well, we are in the money right now. And so, and with our interest rate so high, it's really helping us with our, our funds staying higher and not dwindling as fast as it has been in the past, so that's good news. Our insurance rate is, our fund is down just a little bit. Capital projects, would like to point out, we have 13.8, where we were at zero this time last year, and then our sheriff's ag, as you know, those costs have been coming through, so it's at 14.8 somewhere. Okay, so then let's go to, and interrupt me if you have questions, at any point, page eight, on our tax pull prime, right now, tax pull has been, the rate has been higher than even Texas class, which kept us, you know, competitive, and they were in the lead for quite some time, but tax pull has now been maintaining the lead by a basis point or two. So we're going back from about 1.21 to 1.22 every other day or so, but it's maintaining, but it fluctuates a little bit. And Texas class has been just a little bit below that, 1.20. So tax pull is now, I talked to the bank, and they're going to check both pools and see which is the highest rate, and stay competitive with our general fund to whichever one's the highest rate. So that's why we are earning 1.22 at A and B. And then, on page nine, just the next page, I found this very interesting, that if you'll notice the rates and how they've been increasing, and right in the middle there is the 90-day T-bill rate, and I can tell you for quite some time, I mean, like, years, it had even been in the minus, I think it was minus three basis points for a T-bill. So this may be something that, that we use to diversify, and something else we can invest in, so I'm keeping an eye on that, and that could be a future possibility. And basically, that's it. Okay, be welcome. Six, proposed additional scopes of work with the public county law enforcement complex project, the spirit of public operations of the county states, the community committee to incorporate certain additional scopes of work to the public county law enforcement complex, John Keel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before I start, you don't have this, okay, that's a lot to talk about. Anyway, with this agenda item, we're asking you more to consider doing some additional work over the basic scope of work for the, for the county law enforcement complex project. The additional scope of work basically recognizes that this is possibly gonna be the last major investment that the county makes in this, in the law enforcement facility for some time to come. So here's an opportunity for the county to, to make that, that project hold and ride from the get-go, and so essentially, that's what these scopes of work contemplate, getting rid of some stuff that's been out there for decades, and probably should have gone decades ago, making some changes to the security fencing, perimeter roads, that all will make the facility much more usable and secure for the sheriff's department, for the sheriff's staff people. Just to give you a brief update on where we're at right now, we're well into the process, so any changes that occur, you know, just as a natural course of the basic scope of work we have there, it'll be mine, because we've gotten most of the unknowns out on the surface. We know what we're dealing with, Mike's done a stellar job, supported by the advisory committee in managing costs as we've gone along, and so far, the contract, by way of change orders, has increased by 0.91 percent. So that's exceptional for a project of this size and scope, and I should add that most of those change orders that have been done, have been done as a result of building safety coming in after the fact and saying, oh, you've gotta do this now, or you've gotta do that now. So although any time that happens, then it involves some cost, and that's where a good number of those change orders have come. So let me run through these various scopes here very quickly for you, and I captioned these myself, Mike, I have to apologize if somehow I captioned them wrong, but I wanted to put them in some sort of sense order, if they made sense to me, hopefully they made sense to you, not like I'm saying your pavement or anything like that, but anyway, you get where I'm going with that. So site restoration, and I'll refer to your map, there's a bunch of buildings, building foundations that are scattered about the site, they've been in there for quite some time, and with that scope of work, we're basically cleaning up all that, all that clutter from decades past. Additional scope of work, too, has to do with enhancing the property line fence, and I think there was some question at one point in time, as to whether or not we actually had a county fence line that was on somebody else's property line. So part of this work will rectify whatever questions there may be about that. We're going to make some, some enhancements to the Sallyport Road, right to the south of the Sallyport, to make that more resilient and long-lasting. The same thing with the Bermuda Road, to give the sheriff's staff better access in and around the facility, so they can control it at all times. And then finally, we have some site security lighting improvements that we want to make, that will provide for better lighting on the parking lot, and also provide for better lighting, you gotta watch for somebody who's trying to cross the parking lot that shouldn't be crossing the parking lot. So all those are kind of laid out in some form or fashion on that site drawing that was provided to you. The total, and this is a very conservative total, because there is a 10% contingency that's been put on all these items, and primarily because these are based on cost proposals that have been provided by Western Builders, and these are cost proposals, they're not hard quotes, so there's gonna have to be a little bit of latitude applied with those numbers. But the total of all five scopes, if the court chooses to implement them, goes to $746,000. Now, as far as days added to the contract, if we can sequence this work in now, with the work that Western Builders is doing, it's not gonna add any days to the contract's performance period. So it's not like it's gonna extend the contract period out for six months or so to get this work done. Now Sheriff, let me ask you, do you, have I portrayed that appropriately, or is there anything else you might want to add to the discussion?
I do.
Okay. So there you have it. Now, the advisory committee considered all this, more additional work in this last meeting, and they moved to recommend that the court approve that this additional work be done, again, understanding that this may be the response on for that particular facility for the next 20 years, and so here's an opportunity to do what needs to be done and do it right. So if you had any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them, or ask somebody who's smarter than me to answer.
John, I have a couple of questions on scope of report three and four, the road enhancements in particular. Is there a reason we're not leveraging our road and bridge department for this work?
That, that could be done. I mean, that's...
That's 200,000.
The 200-something thousand, that is eight-inch thick concrete that will be within the Sallyport back area, that'll take you back to the northwest side of the jail. Sebastian, can you offer eight-inch thick stock grade concrete?
No, sir.
The rest of the roads that's out there, some of it will be chip sealed, going from Avenue 29 Street down Avenue Well to the end of the Gunn Range Road. We just took into consideration time of year that it has to be done, we're getting ready to move forward with all the paving out there pretty soon. We know that they were busy, so that's why we included it with the Western Builders.
What about the work effort? I mean, I recognize that you're not able to pour the concrete, but I think about the work effort, and able to save some expenses along those lines to maybe supplement that work. And not by, and I have expertise, so I may not be asking the appropriate question.
Is there, is there any part of that work that the county brother bridge would do that would bring...
bring cost out of Western Builders?
My concern about volunteering that road and bridge, they've got a full-time responsibility right?
Well, and the, the other-
Right in the middle of doing their chip seals that they do every year annually, so I think we're asking way too much for the road and bridge.
The other critical thing you get into is if there's any problems with that concrete in the next five years, ten years, there's going to be a lot of this. Western Builders is going to say it's road and bridge, Road and Bridge is going to say it's, this way it puts the higher liability for the integrity of the work that's being done solely on the path of this.
I recognize that. I guess my line of frustration, and I certainly don't want to volunteer to speak for Road and Bridge, that's never my intention at all, but we have an additional close to million dollars of what we're betting here. And Carrie, can you keep me honest on our total project cost? Where are we at this point? I mean, I see the recap for fifteen million, but thinking the amount of debt that we took on in this project.
Our owner expenses and everything, it's about a million, I believe, this point.
Fifteen million.
But that goes left, I believe, by four point two million, and it's still left.
Eighteen, you see contingency. We have one point.
And the idea is to keep that contingency, right? To be able to return that back to the project and save money along the way. So, I certainly recognize in the briefing, John, that you've identified all of the opportunities to save dollars along the way, and I think that's important, that's an important part of project management, so I want to minimize that. I'm just, I'm looking for guidance, close to an additional million of what is highest priority, if you will.
Well, I-
This is a lot of changes.
It is, and, and, and maybe I did a bit of a disservice to, I mean, the Mike work with Dave and with the sheriff, for fight sometimes, you go back and forth on what's, what's the greatest priority of right now. So, whatever's listed here is not necessarily listed in priority order, it's grouped together because it's similar work when you're looking at it. But all these, all these items, and the list was considerably longer too. Dave and the sheriff, they're extremely conservative, and so when they went through and identified what they thought their priorities were, they were really the topmost priorities, not all priorities. And so, I'm going to guess, Sheriff, that the list that we're talking about today pretty much encapsulates all the priorities and groups them. But, I mean, I wouldn't say scope one is the highest priority, there are high priorities, but then that scope for scope two is a second priority. Again, those were just grouped, so that they all made sense.
Where's the recommendation for these tellings to cover?
Contingency.
The road, the road needs to be fixed all the way to Gunn Range, just for lighting and security purpose. The fence, we're like, three feet over the line right now. So, we either fix it now, or we're going to have to fix it after this when we have no money, not the budget for it, because there are always people looking at that property as we speak. And that fence line goes like this, and it should go, and there are two sets of fences that'll have to be moved off of that line. So, whoever put that fence up years ago didn't put it on the line. So, that's a huge expense right there, and so, we're just trying to get that thing back on. And like I said, it's either do it now, when all we've got is some money, or we'll get it later, where you're going to have to figure out where we can find it.
I was on like that. I just, here's my, my biggest, I think I've told you a few minutes. I needed to go, the last meeting was almost busy, I didn't need to go. But my, my, I'm just going to say is, my plan would be, why was this not consumed in the original scope of the project? I mean, why was it not included in the cost? It wouldn't have come back, you know? Well, while we're here, this going in, it really did affect side of the country. It should have been, it should have been established before at the beginning.
Let me address it for a moment. Really, the sheriff and them, we were standing after one day, and we seen where the project was going, financially we were doing great. Got a hundred and sixty-nine acres out there, putting all this money into law enforcement center. I just started having a vision, I mean, we cleaned this up, it really helped this and everything, so that's how a lot of this got generated. These things were never thought of back through the two and a half, three years of design that we went through. It's just now, if we do have money left in contingency, could we enhance what we're doing out here? It's basically clean enough.
I understand, I understand, I understand it should have been involved, it should have been included in the proposal. I'm all for it, you know?
I think the other part of it- I think the other part of it was, though, that what we were expecting as a price was going, came in way under what we thought it was going to be exact. And I think that's where, now we saw this few extra dollars, let's try to get all that cleaned up, because we do that a hard time out there. You know, you look at the foundations and stuff like that, and you're going, oh, they're great, you're just leaving them in the ground. Well, it does make it difficult to mow around, all that kind of stuff and those kind of things.
I understand, we found a cover tool.
Just, yeah, that's been out there for years. We've got a subject thing out there that's probably fallen in.
So, Judge, what you're saying, I'm telling you, my digital process might be-
Well, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, it's just me, I just, I just look at the things that are planned with people. Okay, a lot should have been included, and also from the beginning.
Well, I would, yes, our process needs to be, if for what I work.
I'm not for this, I'm all for this, I want to get it cleaned up. I think it would, why spend the money on a building if you've got trash around it? Just get it cleaned up.
Let me ask you a question, excuse me, what do we need to do here to deal with the next project? We can rent a building, tie it to a haul, we bring it to you, and they'll get a call. With all due respect, Commissioner, this is just something, if we had the money, we'd please like to try to finish it.
Yeah, and when I speak about process, Mike, I speak holistically for the county. I know today, when we see this one piece of paper, roughly seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, we're not done with our strategic planning process, so I can certainly think about another way to use seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Not diminishing the need at the property, but there are other facilities that need to be addressed. So, when I speak about the property, I speak holistically, which I said that, you know, I was the naval because of the process, never the need. This is the most debt we've ever taken on as a county in thirty years plus, was the analysis of that, so that's the process I speak to.
I do overlook my comment too, man. And I understand what the company wants, certainly that we want to do additional, if we can, as we're looking at a local space. But as the, as Mike and John and Sheriff articulated, if we find out later on, after this project is complete, that we should have done this to enhance, had the opportunity in that, in that vacuum to do that, would it not have been more prudent for us to do it now than, I told you so, or later on? Pay it now, pay it.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would disagree with that. I just would say, Commissioner, that we will always find that, right? I would expect that to always be the case. When we're in a project, you're going to find new opportunities at, on any project. So, I think we are assuming that it's this project, so there are other things. That will always be the case. I can't give you one project, Mike, that we've, we've entertained, that we found a different approach, a different strategy along the way.
My understanding, though, is too, that this money can only be used for that construction building, and that-
Or to pay off debt earlier, or to pay off debt.
You can buy it now, but I'm saying, we have things at the jail, we can't even use that money to fix on the deal.
Is that correct?
It is only allotted for those to-
Contingency to pay off the debt a little bit.
But that's the only thing in right age for these gas schools, the law enforcement complex, or pay off the debt.
Judge, I move that we approve the five scopes of work, site restoration, property line fence, perimeter road, and that's the site security.
I have a motion, second on favor right here. Post. Thank you, John, to Michael and Sheriff. Number seven, Sheriff's and Constable fees to consider Act One, approving the Sheriff's and Constable Civil processes, twenty eighteen. Has anything changed on this, Sheriff?
My understanding is that we want to keep ours the same, but I think the constables may have wanted to raise something, but I can't speak for that. I saw some, I saw something that they wanted to raise some rates on one of them, but I don't remember.
Do you know what makes it better, that you had down that one rates? What I, what I gave you is-
Increases. Initiate.
I think this is the one that we wanted to stay the same, but theirs was, remember which one, what thing was it, the river?
I think it's the river.
That's the one, you really had to read.
Yeah, it's, this, I'm not sure what it was, but it's part of the hundred and fifty now, but they want to do a five percent execution of the past two hours, additional fifty hours per hour, fifty dollars per hour. That, that's part of the, the twenty-five.
So, do we, Ted, do we, do we just like this, do we go on, or what do we, would we need to ask the constable?
I do know that, I do know that they're going to need to stay the same as we are at present. We're trying to stay the same because of the two percent.
I think motion, keep those processes the same.
Do we need, I mean, do we need to, do we need to file with the constable?
They obviously are not interested in speaking with us this morning, but they might be here.
But it's included in the documents, I think if we approve that, we approve that.
Well, I was, my motion was to keep the process the same.
So, without the change? Without change, okay. Okay, I have a motion to keep the process the same, without, without change, I have a second.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion, second, on favor, is your hand. And those five. Thank you. Okay, number eight, capital credit fund to certify the receipt of three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-three cents under Texas Property Code, Section Seventy Four, on six oh two, determine the use of this fund, and set it as a recording. This is the, the funds that we get every year, and we decide where we want to put them. I propose we put mills, quit mills on wheels, and snack back for kids, if y'all have any.
Yeah.
Can I motion, y'all? Uh-huh, okay. We make the motion, we do that. Split it between mills on wheels, mills on wheels, and snacks packed for kids. Second, motion, second, on favor, is your hand. Uh, thank you. Number nine, authorization of an election to establish Potter County Assistant District to consider and approve the authorization to conduct election to establish Potter County Assistant District One in public areas of Potter County. In creation of this district, including the commission and commission of sales tax and selling of the assistant district, process from which the form will be used on fire rescue department.
Good morning, Paul Hamilton, Washington Homeowner Association. Commissioner Church, we're bringing this forward to you to put it on the ballot, and remember, the old paperwork done since Secretary Stank did approve, and put it on the ballot as a proposition, just a little bit for the end. Leland, the homeowners association from this area, this quick number is just to replace equipment and upgrade Potter County Fire and Rescue. You've got information, we have had in the past, we've got approximately seventeen, or twenty-seven vehicles that are at least seventeen, twenty-eight years old, turning up here, air packs, everything that's involved, you know, to maintain Potter County Fire Department. As of this morning, and we've had two calls, it's up here, with nine hundred and forty-seven twenty years on nearly a hundred percent of our security department. So, we would request that to be placed on the November ballot, and there's a form, a order authorizing the election to establish County Assistant District One in your package. I'm sure Leland would like to address you for a second.
Good morning, Leland. How are you? Those of you who may not, me, I'm Leland Callaway, and I live in Eagle Tree. And I'm not actually coming on behalf of the Homeowners Association, this is a personal thing with me. I thank you for the opportunity to share my views with you. Those of us who live in Eagle Tree, and I'm going to kind of read my notes, kind of spell on screen, I'll keep it more timely. Those of us who live in Eagle Tree and other rural areas rely on Potter County Sheriff, Road and Bridge, and the Fire Rescue for our basic services that the city of Amarillo provides for those of you who live in the city. In my book, Sheriff Thomas, Road and Bridge Superintendent Sebastian, Fire Chief Lake, provide great leadership and promote customer-focused approach to their services to us. I appreciate all these people and our constant contact with them. Our Fire Rescue have only four paid employees, and they rely on volunteer firefighters to get the job done. In two thousand and eleven, you may recall, we had a lot of wildfires going through here that summer, and our community became very concerned about where did the firefighters get their water, if they were going to fight fires in our rural areas where we don't fire hydrate, we don't have fire hydrants. I worked with Assistant Chief Fitzpatrick and samples on the option for a local fire water supply in our areas. In early two thousand and twelve, and the grave was signed between Potter County and the owners of a thirty, forty thousand gallon water tank at Dahl Road in Indian Hill, to store water for fighting fires. I might add that this property has changed, and we're going to have to pursue the new owners, make sure that they're still interested in helping us on this issue. As a result of this project, I became more aware of the importance of our firefighters. I have also become very concerned with the aging of our fleet. I got some information from Chief Lake, and looking at that information, they have a fleet of twenty-seven vehicles. Seventy-eight percent of them are five years or older. Fifty-six percent are ten years or older. Thirty-three percent are twenty years or older. And there's nineteen percent of them that are twenty-five years or more old. And these deals to replace them, I'm told, are handy, folks could have million dollars each. In my view, recruitment volunteers might be more productive with newer and more reliable equipment. Who wants to get on a truck that's not going to make it to the site? I know that our fire and potter county tax, property taxes fund the routine operating costs of the Potter County Fire Rescue Department. However, in my view, additional funds are needed to update the aging fleet. Of course, in my understanding, there's two primary ways we could fund this. One is to raise property taxes. I really don't like that option, not at all. Another one is to add sales tax in the unincorporated areas of Potter County. This is an option I've come to think is probably a good one. Businesses in the Potter County, Potter County outside the Amarillo City limits currently collect only sales tax at a rate of six and a quarter percent. Whereas, businesses inside the city collect eight and a quarter. The businesses that would be affected by an increased rate would be those that are on I forty west, south of the city, west of the city limits, east, east of the city limits, two eighty-seven, two eighty-seven, north of Cherry, and there's a portion of the loop going around the north that would also, the businesses along there would be subject to this. It seems to me that these quarters I mentioned have a lot of travelers coming through Amarillo, and they would help us pay this tax, that's my view. Now, in November of two thousand and eleven, our neighbors in Randall County passed one of these for their fire protection. So, we want, and we had this on our ballot in two thousand and fourteen. It failed to pass by sixty-six percent. And I think the wording on the ballot, which said operations of the district, is probably, I may have even voted against it because of that, because it wasn't very specific as to what this money was going for. So, there was no clarification, and that's probably why it's going to be. I strongly support this personally, to establish this so that we can help our firefighters have better equipment. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Questions? Not associated with that work at all, come.
Unfortunately.
I might, I just say for folks that aren't familiar, the county assistant district is, is one way that counties can utilize sales taxes to, to fund some, there's specific activities that can be funded through this, this process. One's fire and rescue, one's road, one's sheriff, or parks, I think, or something. Anyway, there's five specific things that can be funded with this assistant district property tax. Like Leland's and Paul have said, that we would- Uh, like Leland's and Paul have said, that we, we had tried it, uh, in twenty twelve and fourteen, yes, twenty fourteen, excuse me. And, um, and it failed. So, um, this is, uh, asking to, to do it again, try again. Um, some of the estimates that have come back, um, will be about five hundred thousand dollars of additional income. We can use to, to help fund some of this replacement equipment. And if we can get the word out and educate the folks what this is for. As the judge has said, what's your two cents worth? You know, that's, that's a very, I think, a really neat question to ask people. Does it work? Two cents to have the fire protection?
What was the, uh, who did the wording on the ballot last time? Who does?
Authorizing the creation of Potter County Assistant District Number One and the imposition of sales and use tax at the rate of two percent for the purpose of maintaining financing operations in the district.
Who is responsible?
I think we are. Um, I, I certainly don't want to speak for Malin, but that was going to be one of my follow-up questions. Cause I would agree about the wording on the ballot. And this was very new at the time. I appreciate your church. I know this was a project you worked on quite a bit. But it was new to go to the voters and, and your commissioners court went to those meetings, um, individually and supported Commissioner Church to this effort. But I think the governing body establishes what goes on the ballot. Um, but I think we need to confirm with Malin, no, it's the statute. But you can add supplemental language to that. We're going to drop.
We're going to drop.
Okay.
Can you all get your, uh, the orders? Says that the ballot language shall read, authorizing the creation of Potter County Assistant District Number One. And the imposition of a sales and use tax of the rate of two percent for the purpose of financing operation of Potter County Fire and Rescue Department. Yeah, that may not be approved by the Secretary of State, but I think we got to try.
So who's leading this effort to go back to the voters? What is that process? He's leading, okay, he's using these guys.
And we're going to, we're, I would like to visit with the attorney a little bit. I've been looking up the, the pros and the cons of forming the pack and some of the information that we got out of Randall County people as to the means in which they did it. And the amount of influence that y'all can have, that you can unhave, you can unhave. And, uh, I said, I'm, I'm looking for the ballot that Randall actually did through the archives and the airbrushed those. In that process to find what he'd actually state. Because it does, and, and you can get the copy of what the state said he could say, but we're going to, we're going to banil that. But we're also kind of in a crunch because this all has to be done by late August to, to get this done.
And how many voters are in that area that will decide this?
It would be one of his precincts.
Right, that's a good precinct count.
And all of them don't have a head count. We, we know who voted in the last presidential, you had those numbers, you know. And like I said, we think, to be real honest with you, I would venture to say probably forty percent or more of this entire tax program, tourists. Just people traveling through the county buying snacks and gas and, you know, people staying at the RV parks and things of that nature, you know. It's really not going to affect the homeowners, you know, residents in our area unless there, there's not going to be. Well, yeah, well, we're going to go every way we possibly can with handouts and bailers and that's the reason for the pack and trying to collect some money to put this all together. And I would like to thank Carrie for, she has been amazing and the information was available too. I was just nothing, she's honored.
You know, give her the big hit now.
Well, she deserves it.
Only those folks that, uh, in the incorporated parts can be, but we would request all of your help that you, you know.
Try the last time, but it's just, I don't think the word, the writing about was really a source of. I move that we approve the authorization to put on the ballot. Establishment of the County Assistant District One in the local area of Park.
Second. I have a motion, and second, on favor of your hand. Bottom zero, thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Callaway, for your willing to help. Okay, number ten, DPS supply contract to, uh, first renewal of Potter County's interlocal product protection structure policy. Standby for, and supplies for daily testing and forensic evidence. Put this on there.
It's just a requirement, excuse me. It could be, probably not though. This is an interlocal agreement with DPS to, to buy supplies from them, which is a requirement by DPS when we sell that stuff. So it's kind of a formality. We just need an agreement from the court that we can purchase these supplies through DPS.
I move that we accept, uh, market to supply and have a, apply by DPS.
A motion, second, on favor of your hand. Number one, drug supply litigation. I'm sorry, I'll, they don't wait.
Oh, that, no problem.
I'm sure you enjoy everyone.
Oh, no problem, yes. Thank you very much. Uh, Brian Lander from Templeton, Indiana, he's hired from Russell here in Amarillo. And, uh, I know y'all's time is valuable, so I'll try to make this very brief.
Let me read the, 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 that's okay. To receive a presentation from Attorney Brian Lander regarding the dissection of Volkswagen litigation and take such action as may be appropriate. Now, if you make.
Thank you, sorry, sorry about that. Um, for anyone who's followed the news in the last six months to the year, Volkswagen has been in the news nationally for mostly all the wrong reasons. Uh, it's been not only alleged, but now established and admitted, I think, that for a period of, of, I think, six years, basically Volkswagen, uh, intentionally engineered the software so that the, the car knew when it was being tested for emissions. And the act, and the car actually complied with emission standards. But then when it was out on the roadway, driven by folks, it, it didn't comply, which resulted in, uh, emissions which exceeded, uh, requirements of the various laws. This has, uh, this has been dealt with nationally where, where it applies potentially to Potter County, uh, and other Texas counties. Texas has, uh, a law, the Texas Clean, Clean Air Act, which also prohibits anyone from intentionally manipulating emission standards on vehicles that would result in emissions from those vehicles that exceed legal requirements. Um, I have invited, uh, Mr. Woodring, Ernest Woodring from, from Houston. He's one, he's one of the firms representing various counties already in the state. We're working with their firm. Uh, Randall County, uh, is currently a participant in this. And, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Woodring talk about, uh, some of the specifics. But, but basically every county in the state has an opportunity, uh, to participate in this litigation. It is, it's what's, it's now part of what's, what's referred to as multi-district litigation. Each county has its own claim, but it's all administered within one district. In this case, Travis County, Mr. Woodring, uh, and his firm are representing various counties already in the state, and I think that Randall County being one of them. And, uh, and he's also on the multi-district litigation steering committee. So I'll let, uh, Ernest take over.
Good morning. It's our chance to talk to you guys. Uh, we have represented a firm, and we've led the firms represent, uh, many counties. We are on the leadership committee in the multi-district litigation, Travis County. Uh, and the claims are against VW, the Texas Clean Air Act. Local governments under the Texas Water Code have the ability to bring actions to enforce basically many of the environmental regulations in the state of Texas. And so one of them is the Texas Clean Air Act. Uh, the lawsuit is against VW and related corporate affiliates. In this case, would be Audi, Porsche, for intentionally violating the emission rules that govern, in this case, diesel cars. Uh, and the penalty is up to twenty-five thousand dollars a day for each emission. And if you do the math based upon the number of vehicles involved across the country, which is four hundred and eighty thousand vehicles across the country. You then take a rough percentage of how many of those would be in Texas and a rough percentage of how many of those would be in Potter County. Gets to somewhere over a hundred and fifty vehicles, just probably relying somewhere in the county. That wouldn't count the members passing through on the interstate and the state highways. Uh, so if you, uh, do the math on, say, a hundred and fifty cars violating the law every day, like three hundred days out of the year. Statutory penalties, you can see where the math goes pretty, pretty quickly. Uh, our firm has represented Harris County directly, the firms of Tarrant County directly, Wichita County, Randall County, Cameron County, you know, vacation, obviously. And Travis County Municipal District, in the multi-district litigation. And families cases under continuous D contract, uh, which is thirty-five percent of county's recovery. Fees that the counties get have to be split equally with the state of Texas. Uh, and, uh, we, uh, our firms, the firms handling this handle all the expenses. Uh, we have a, by now, a contract with several of the counties, uh, that, 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 the cost to the county. We recover, we recover our expenses, we recover a percentage of attorney's fees, but if you don't recover, we end up bearing the cost. Uh, the state has filed a separate lawsuit. The state filed after Harris County, Fort Benham. State of Texas is taken the position that by virtue of filing first, it cuts off all of the other counties for the VW litigation. That issue is now being litigated third, fourth, and fifth, and all states. So, uh, that issue remains outstanding. I think the better even statute is that the county cannot cut off those issues. Uh, many of the same counties actually, different counties, the lawsuit filed against the young Chrysler, there's a separate emission issue there. Uh, the state has not filed a lawsuit against the young Chrysler, um, on settlement. So I think, um, it appears based upon certainly the recent news reports that many of our companies with the diesel emissions, uh, were involved in trying to evade the emissions to make a similar. So, um, happy to answer any questions on this, that's a litigation. Settlements you read about in California, of course, the, the, the links of dollars have to do with consumer class action. Complaints, and some of the federal government complaints against VW, which have been resolved by this. Uh, state and local governments in Texas continue to survive and those are, as I said, on the document in the trial.
Ted?
Yes?
Your honor attorney, what do you think?
I've been involved in one multi-district litigation, um, and to have an attorney in the steering committee, so I think that, um, I would naturally want to review the deal contract. And if the court is inclined to pursue this, then I would be happy to do that. There will be no exposure to the county for expenses or fees in the absence of recovery.
That's correct.
Literally, that's all I have to add to this.
I'm so happy that we get to split whatever we do get with the state, because they're just not screwing us enough yet. Sorry. Did I say that? I'm sorry.
The contract, I believe the contract, the way the, the way the statute works in the contract is a little bit more complex and spread up thirty layers than it did in the fee. Because in addition to there being a cap on the amount of our fee of thirty-five percent recovery, there's also a cap based upon number of hours we spend working on the case. So that makes the contract a little bit more complex than what you should say that five percent. It is additional cap on what these attorneys make it. It's when we keep track of our time and our rate. But that by no means means that our counties would have to pay us an hourly rate. My understanding is sometimes there's still people that get out.
Yeah, right.
So we, if, if we were recovered and we had not spent more than a hundred hours, then we would not get thirty-five percent recovery. We get the hundred hours times hourly rate, which is a big hourly rate. Uh, but we have, we cap at, you know, that hundred hours times the hourly rate. With, to understand, it could be up to a thousand hours, making our, our, it's time for that. That just means we're going to get nine thousand dollars.
Are you, give us a clue as to when this might be possible, so?
I, I can give you a clue and, and I think that that's about all I can do. Um, VW has resolved a federal litigation in most respects, which have to do with nationwide class action against consumers. Has resolved its claims against the US government, the US government claims for federal environmental statutes. Um, the state's have resolved some of the state's claims and has remaining state claims. Um, that I, outside of a year or two, maybe quicker than that. If you read the paper, if you see the pressure, VW is under, I would think they would be under extraordinary pressure to get this resolved. They could continue running the car company without this company hanging. Uh, latest news reports are that they were, as a result of this investigation, the German authorities found, this is reported in the media, it's in the chain. Uh, German authorities found that they were colluding with the other German car manufacturers, uh, just about emissions that, uh, being competitive. How we handle it, so, uh, that probably not getting better for them, according to the press. So, you know, I hate all this. The, the, I don't want to take all your time, but the biggest remaining defense of VW is actually, they've pretty much admitted in their guilty plea, emissions that they have done, that they continue doing. Um, the biggest remaining defense they have for the state and local governments is that the federal law rehounds what the state wants in this. But the states and local governments can't enforce against that. I don't think they're on the winning side of that argument. That issue will be to the, so once that's decided, they may, uh, consider what their options are after that.
I do have a couple of questions, but they may be more procedural in nature and Scott, I'll, I'll lean to you to keep me in my lane. We don't often entertain multi-district litigation, so I may not phrase my question appropriately. Don't give me that grace. But, so as it regards to the litigation, um, I'm assuming you're here seeking representation, asking the county to, to see you as our potential representative.
That's, that's correct.
Right, okay. Um, and so I think about purchasing protocol and, and I have a few things in my mind. We give professional exemption and, and what is the right protocol? And I guess the question is more to Scott, that we are being approached to join litigation. Um, A, that's, you know, that's question number one, if we want to move in that direction.
Right.
If we do, uh, I'm assuming, I'm assuming we have full flexibility to get any representation. This just happens to be who is entertaining that to the commissioners court.
That's correct.
Okay.
Strictly speaking, you're going to engage professional services controlled by the Professional Services procurement act, which is chapter twenty-two, fifty-four of the government code. What that essentially says, uh, is you choose who you believe to be best qualified and negotiate with them on terms of the contract. If you can't reach agreement, you move to the next person you think is best qualified. The only real hard and fast rule on the PSPA is you can't feel.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, if you believe, uh, this primary's firm supports, this fortress firm, and I'm probably mispronouncing them, I apologize. Uh, but if you believe they are best qualified, certainly they've already been working on this for some time. Uh, I can tell you, I don't think Ted and I are geared up yet to engage in multi-district litigation over a violation of Clean Air Act. Uh, so, uh, then you, you really do have the latitude, I think, to, we believe you do.
And, and I guess what I'm struggling, I'm having a hard time discerning, um, if they are the best qualified. Certainly not that you're not, that's not my baseline, is that I would look to our legal counsel, um, in the professional business to be able to vet that, right? Uh, and I don't know what the right protocol is. I, I would kind of ask the question back is, as our legal representation, if you feel like they are the most qualified? Because that's where I would, I would lean to discern.
Yeah, I, I will admit, I'm, I'm standing before you to damn it, a bit of a disadvantage because I haven't done a lot of homework on, on this particular case. I've followed it just in the news and I know I've, I've spoken some with Mr. Ryan, who's, Ben's Ryan is Harris County attorney. And then Harris County's kind of led the, uh, led the way, uh, as far as within Texas engaging in this kind of litigation. But, uh, it's my understanding that your firm is representing Harris County in this.
Yes.
If they're representing Harris County, that would be, uh, knowing what I know about Harris County, that would certainly be an initiative of, uh, of, uh, qualification.
Okay, so their representation of that county makes you more at ease in terms of skill set and appropriate representation of the county. Um, are there other things that are not presented or we need to be thinking through as we potentially entertain a, a litigation of this? It's like obviously extremely complex and we're talking about very local granular level. But as it gets national and continues to get national attention, what are those? layers that we need to be thinking through?
Well, I think from your perspective, the keystone issue for you to consider is any potential exposure, negative exposure, the county may face if it decides to enter this litigation. And of course, those are, those are questions appropriately addressed by these gentlemen. I think that's, I think that's your key consideration at this point, beyond simply do we really want to get involved in lengthy, complex litigation? And that's a risk, that's a simple risk benefit analysis in the final, in the final run.
So, to bounce that question back, is what are those negative exposure components that we need to be mindful of and potentially prepared for?
From, from strictly a legal perspective, I wouldn't speak to the political or the public side of the perspective. It's possible that VW, if they want to engage in this, they want to figure out how many effective vehicles reside in Potter County or Conover County. That might require some people to turn their attention. We would like to be supervised by the county attorney, it's preferable to have them actually involved on the proceedings. We don't expect them to do the work other than the supervising work, so that would mean some time and attention. There, in other cases, I don't foresee that happening in this case, in other cases, we handle these cases, Director Kevin, Potter County, for, and Harris County. When defendants get aggressive, they like to, to, have, like to, chosen a path of challenging the potential contingency, the attorneys, it's violation of the process clause, and they have sued, countersued, the county government. We always get that representation as being part of our representation, so we're starting to do those. They've not been successful in handling those challenges. We have a, can you know, the first court deals establishing that the county continues to account, it's not a violation of any of these process laws. It's got nice, helpful language, informative language about the value of these programs. In our contract, we have, most of our counties, it's a whole part, whole, whole, almost everything county, to, to, so the county has determinations under the law.
So, we need to be prepared for a discovery, potentially a discovery phase and a counter, a countersued?
That's, that's far, if you didn't engage in that kind of thing.
Are there other firms involved in this, in Texas?
There are many other firms involved in multi-district litigation. So, the, for example, Harris County filed in Harris County, some other counties filed in Travis County, because we can file in County, we can file Travis County. Harris County's action brought together in the multi-district litigation, where it's all being administered by one judge in Travis County, Judge Schuback. So, every case that was filed would be transferred, either goes Travis, you know, the county decided to sue Travis County, transfer to this court, or sue here, or be transferred to Travis County, or get a, and so they will have the steering committee of all local governments, which my firm is on, who are working, Richard Litoff, and Abraham Quatton, back with, uh, two hundred, sort of, this county. And, so, the issue of whether the state can cut off the other counties, later filed counties, state that litigation for the moment, until we get a, so.
It's like you're saying that's still open, so we need to be prepared if we do move in this direction, and there is a decision that the state filing first overrides, all of the net effect of the county's filing is a zero.
That's correct.
That there are no efforts, it stops at that point.
For, for VW.
Right.
That's, that's correct. And, um, so, that's still an evaluation.
And Mr. Heinrich, to help me understand your role, in my, in my mind, I'm seeing this legal team, where I'm seeing Scott and Ted, and from a local perspective, and this multi-discipline perspective, I, I don't understand kind of that component of it.
Well, being, being here locally, should, should the, the commissioner's court want an update? Should Ted or Mr. Brumley want an update on what's going on? Certainly, it would be, it would be easy for them to talk to Mr. Woodring, but I think many times in local litigation, even though it's, it's being handled somewhere else, in this case, in Travis County, having someone locally that can report specifically about updates and that sort of thing, I think it's helpful. In the grand scheme of things, in terms of the overall fee, it doesn't matter whether you had only Mr. Woodring's firm or his firm with us, we're sharing in that fee, so it doesn't add any cost or any exposure to Potter County, but it adds an additional layer, in this case, of local representation, who can hopefully be more attentive, if necessary, to responding to any requests, any, any, any requests.
So, I have a couple of questions about, you know, the discovery, high-end, expensive discovery, does that bring informability on the county itself?
No. Realistically, I don't think the county faces any expectation for breaking the law. The state may prevail, but it's cut off, but realistically, given VW's post-ramp level fee, sort of your form of county, which is why in our contract, we have a whole harmless provision for Potter County, and many other counties. And the discovery would be geared to how many vehicles were in Potter County, the issues, would be cost, not cost, but maybe perhaps in the first of times, to have to address and find documents.
So, I don't know if we need to wear more than what we want at the beginning, as far as deciding what firms to look at, of then looking at Scott and Ted, and if you guys have any discomfort with that, or what you, you search.
I'm assuming today is an introduction, and then there's follow-up due diligence, you need to look at your attorney fees and what you referenced, Ted, before we take formal action. That, that's my assumption, based on what we're doing today.
I would, yes, I would move to the next agenda to give us a chance to look at the contract. As far as these attorneys here, I'm well familiar with Ryan, who's the president of our association, worked with him, yeah, twenty years at least. We're happy to find information about our teams.
Yes.
And, and, and we're happy to come back at, at, at the following, following meeting, the one after that, if y'all would like for us to come back and answer more questions after you've had time to do that, we're happy to do that as well.
But just maybe just pull the passive on the conversation.
Sure, yeah, that's, that's perfectly considerable. Do you want to let, let, um?
All this, the, the, okay. Whereas, you know, you know, and I, because independents want to challenge, so the national lawsuits, they get particular about the, the, the wording, the reservation that is used, if y'all, if you're for the member, or any reservation, and, 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 just.
You're saying, well, that you can, that's perfect.
Yes.
Just unfortunate, we have that contract, what we're waiting for, the Harris Deputy's cars, that's awful.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm glad I had enough, spell your name, I'll just tell us all the.
Heinrich Nash with the guard.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, number twelve, surplus property disposals, consider an act of disposals attached listed items that did not sell at auction.
Yes, these are some desks that were in the tax office and did sell, so now we just need approval to go in, and, 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 or the stations that possibly could, uh, you like to see these. Please give up, by the motion. I move, I was, I'm sorry, Judge, I was making sure there was nothing we could use for budget real quick.
Move on, right, please.
I make a motion that we approve disposing of the proposed list that did not sell at auction.
I have a motion, second on paper, which I, uh, two, thank you. Formal bid renewal, to consider an act of renewal, formal bid number one, zero, nine, two, dash fourteen, transportation storage of human remains, based on the service for additional, on August one, three, seventeen, three, six, July first, twenty eighteen, the classing is unchanged, but we'll give these contracts.
Yes, this is a, just a renewal by term, that we can go ahead and, this is one more year, Judge Jackson called me last week, he's satisfied with the services, so, the vendor is, sounds one of the relationships, so.
They do excellent job. They work closely with us every day, she's a wonderful people.
You are.
I move, we renew the formal bid, ten, ninety-two, dash fourteen, transportation storage, storage of human remains with the ending of the service.
I have a motion, second on paper, which I, uh, two, thank you. Number fourteen, formal bid number one, one, four, seven, dash seventeen, janitorial supplies, consider an act of common, or the formal bid number one, one, four, seven, dash seventeen, to the lowest of best bid.
This is a janitorial bid that Allison Coleman, uh, two, does every year, and it's just a reality for us to go through and evaluate those, and, you know, that's good for consideration going ahead, and, uh, the national formal bid that you have, you have, to those, I can, I can.
I make a motion that we approve formal bid one, one, four, seven, dash seventeen, janitorial supplies, as per the.
Sorry.
I have a motion, second on paper, which I, uh, two, thank you. Number fifteen, all the government cooperation, neighbor, planning to hear, those from, you know.
I'm pleased that you're taking the, uh, I make a couple of just quick updates, the LGC did need, and I have a couple visual documents to just walk through, and actually, Commissioner, can I start this, if you have them, I'll move this over here to Judge Tanner about, yeah. You probably saw some of this, there's been quite a bit of press around of what a new baseball field might look like. So, the idea is really just to give you the visual, none of that is really kind of settled at this point, but it is obviously being shared with the public and asking for input. So, there's a couple of pictures, and, Braden, you can just scroll through, picture by picture is fine, and I'll just speak as, as we do that, I think there's only four or five in here, then I'll hand out around this actual document. But the parking garage, as you know, is near completion, finalized some parking rates. Now, discussions around the LGC in particular, are, is work with the city council about on-street parking. And so, they did open bids, and this, I think, is important for us to just know about the city at large, is one of the vendors they're looking at for on-street parking in particular is an application to pay on your phone. So, there won't be signs, or, or, or money, money drops, if you will, to pay there. This is a, a mobile pay-by-phone app, but there were six proposals, they're down to two. The city is not paying for this, the vendor that they select is getting a percentage of those fees, of who uses that. And they're looking at a proposal with what they're calling turnkey, that's any signage, marketing, anything to, to go along with on-street parking. And the RFP utilized the information of a parking study that the city did some, some time ago. So, then, the big thing in terms of the presentation was really this and a couple of options. I think there were a total of fourteen, and what was presented to the LGC were these, and, and there's one that I'm showing you here on this screen that's not in that paper packet, because a councilman, I think, asked for additional renderings that were shared, and so there is an additional picture in here, I think it's, I think, it is interesting, and I think this is important for us to know, how, how much the Santa Fe building was, was talked about as such a, a flagship property, right, in the whole city, which we all know that, right? We have a little appreciation for that. But it was interesting how the designer was trying to, one, one of the, the big components was that when you would see this team on the TV, you would know it was an Amarillo team. People that didn't know it was Amarillo, Texas, could see something, whether it was another building, whatever that was. So, some of our reaction, it was just presentation about different models. And something that I think is important to see on this, on these slides, which I don't think you can see well, there's a lot of thought to the space in between the buildings, so that at street level, you could see into the stadium, as you're driving by. And then there was dialogue that the stadium, I, I don't think this has been landed on, but I think the recommendation is that it would be built, you could, it would under, under, I can see twelve, I could have that number wrong, but it would be built with an area of you going down. So, I thought that was interesting. Hotel slated for mid, mid-August tour, they're looking at additional parking in the parking garage structure, so I wanted to share that. And we're expecting an RFP, the LGC is, I think by the end of this week, for someone to build this, that's going out. I think what was shared at LGC is it's got a lot of national attention, and, and they have, will potentially expect you to bid on this, because of how visible this project has been. So, that'll go out, the expectation is by this Friday, a forty-five date processed, and it's a twelve to fourteen month project when it is issued.
Big cost difference between these designs, or do we know what those costs are?
Um, I don't think there's big cost difference on the designs, and normally, I know the cost just off the top of my head. I want to say four, don't quote me on this, but I want to say forty-five million, the entire project, but the stadium was twenty-fourty, somewhere around that component, and the hot tax was being used. And so, the, in the proposal, I had some edits that I suggested, because in the proposal, the way it's written was that the LGC was paying for the funds, and the LGC as a body doesn't do that, it is the city's hotel tax that's paying for that. So, I think that, that's some of the changes that we're expecting. The, the legal team is reviewing the RFP, because they don't do these often, right? And so, the document itself was over a hundred and ten pages, if I remember correctly.
I think around fourteen months.
Twelve to fourteen month is the project timeline. Very good. Yes, and, you know, we all know Jerry at the city, and he's, so we're all looking at Jerry, he's doing his best to smile when they say twelve to fourteen months, or that. But that, that's the information that was presented at the LGC, and I just wanted to bring this back. The next LGC date is August second, and around eleven-thirty, and I'm sharing that date on purpose, because there may be a possible tour around that time, so if that does happen, you could just stay in your calendar. Certainly, anyone in the audience too, that would like to attend, just connect with us, and we'll make sure you have that information. Quick thing on neighborhood plan, provide, provide a few things in recent for Commissioner Vaughn. You know, we have a small committee with council representation and city representation that meet on this neighborhood plan, because it is a new idea, we're a couple years in, but we're expecting to know who our new city council representative is, we don't know who that is yet on this committee. But what was shared in the North Heights, the one that was completed, because now the plan is done and they're in execution mode, is physical project, really for prepaid categories, physical projects, level of services, and capital, capital improvement plan. So, there are a few things that are happening in the North Heights, in particular housing projects, that they're trying to piggyback off, that the city is. And so, one of my questions was, well, how is that different? Why, why does this plan help that process? And so, what AJ educated me on is, oh mercy, there might be a housing project that goes up, and that's it, a housing project goes up. But because of this plan, the city is taking an added diligence about looking at the sidewalk. So, maybe there's funding to put a sidewalk in, or start to change that infrastructure, and updating those plans. Also working on a tech stop grant, as a part of that, there's a major sewer line project that's happening in North Amarillo that's scheduled to come. So, that's in the physical project side. On the level of services, there is an increase in, in the priority, I guess is the best word to be used, fixing pot holes, grass, all of those day-to-day operations. And then the capital improvement plan is, now they're starting to vet what, what did get approved through the bond? There was some money that is, was approved through the bond, and what that will actually look now at a tangible level. And they're also working with AISD on projects that are coming in that area, again, to work with all the governing, governing bodies to, to be able to use these projects effectively, and kind of talk to each other. The body of plan is about fifty percent complete, which is calling phase two, where the work kind of in the community is done. There's a total of five processes, and, and then starting to work on some of those efforts. Happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to give you basis, enough deep, as we move through, it's different for us, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, number sixteen, county vote, and we welcome being active this meeting, starting the process today, we will start today about two o'clock, because, uh, just, on, has to have some, and we'll reconvene tomorrow morning at nine, and begin on Wednesday at nine, we'll come back in just a second. Employment hours, information technology transfer, Brandon Purington is going to be going to be. to information technology manager of the Department of Defense in fact, effective July ten, twenty seventeen. Number two, lowering of the system administrative position salary from sixty-three to six eighty-two to seventy-sixty thousand, while raising the salary of the network engineer position from fifty-five to fifty-eight, six eighty-two to sixty-seven immediately. Brandon asked me about this, I said, yes, I assumed we had talked to Katie about this, but I think we have a way around it, that we can, Katie, would you like to? Would you like to tell us how we do that or is Katie still in here?
She's still here.
Yeah, we, you can move for a bit on this.
You can, we just need to make sure we get a change in status.
Okay.
Okay.
And then Rosemary's employment of Adrian Mount, another of Sonora, is facing prepared for, um, no, maybe you are thirteen, please say thirteen. And we're focusing on Cal Bank, this is more than both of the, one nineteen, twenty seventeen.
Can we approve the, is one that I had to say.
I have a motion in second, all the favor, they're fighting. Are you kind of projects, I have the everything today. Did y'all report, Sharon, I don't know if you want to speak to this or not, but it is, we're across the situation I am.
I seen that you told me in the email this morning, maybe I might have gotten that, but just normally we send this jail count to the judge. We are across this, we have five hundred and ninety-nine beds. When you add in classification, five seventy-nine is usually our max. We have five hundred and ninety-one people in our jail right now. We're extremely full, like this is six beds. I even went up one since I sent this, this one, I don't know. Currently have two in the hospital. We have one in Randall County, we have eight females and children. We've got eighty-five females total. Five hundred and four are felons, which is eighty-six, eighty-six percent of the population. And sixty-one are infirmers, which is only ten percent of the population. I will tell you that, you know, we're going to have to do something before we move the jails out. Childrens will not take our fails, they won't take our females, so Randall County is full, so I don't know.
Is it the time of year, is that what you do, do hock or fail?
I wish I could answer that. And it's just, it's absolutely crazy. I said, I think everybody over in Pennsylvania looks forward, so maybe we have a point where we have to call up and see what they've got, which is a long ways to go for driving back and forth. And most of those, just, I mean, I'm just telling you this so you know, because if we transfer to those people and put them in there, we're still responsible for their medical and everything else.
So what can we do, can we play to the judges to let some of the lesser?
We have sent, we sent two women now to both the county attorney and district attorney. Scott's already said that he's got, he's got work and not getting down to it. I said, you can see that it's sort of not there, it's not following offices that are killing this. We are extremely full.
Sheriff, is it?
And it's been, it's been a couple of weeks, I mean, it's just been so, I'm sorry.
Do children's change to not be taken around?
I've just never taken around, it's always been around. And where they can release some of these on PR, or, or, I gotta get that approval through the district attorney. Like I said, I know Scott's office, they'll, they'll make it some, we'll release two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We definitely can't, I'm sure it's, I want to talk about. I do, Tad is.
Brother Bridge had a bid involved in the max that on the Hescus Road in the intersection with the road to Bush. And there were some pretty serious injuries involved. It's been reported, Texas Association of Kansas has it, it's working the claim. I have no personal knowledge of what actually happened. Just the fact that there was an accident, there probably will be a claim and that's been reported. And the information we did have is been sent where it needs to be sent.
So I want, do you need a civilian personnel or both?
Yeah, well, as I understand.
The last time her, she's been putting.
Yeah.
That's, I believe.
And the repair should be to the other, we didn't listen to our daughters. As far as I know, the injuries were.
Responsibility, well, I don't have enough information, especially if you have that mission.
Well, the operator of the loader was cited for failure to yield to the right-of-way turning left, so that's where we stand.
Okay, we'll exit session today, begin the others for the next term. I'm talking about the, um, anything else coming up. Is there any other discussion at all? You're for, okay. We're going to recess for about two minutes and then come back and start the budget.